So I'd like to call, to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
This.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under-
One nation.
Indivisible-
Indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Justice.
All right, well, maybe that's something we need to work on a little bit. It's hard to hear everybody. So I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you all for joining us. We apologize, we had a couple of technical difficulties, so we won't be broadcast on our usual channel 22. Instead, we're broadcasting live from YouTube, and we're also recording this meeting so that you can visit it in case you had an issue watching this meeting. So we're going to start as usual with our superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, Board members. Good evening, it's great to see everyone, and thanks, everybody who was able to work through, with us through our technical difficulties to be able to tune in. Lots has happened, a lot has happened since our last board meeting. As the public will know and the board will know that last Monday, we went ahead and closed all in-person school through the end of this year and through summer learning. We've been working closely with Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield Public Health to try to really make sure that we're providing real clear direction for our community so everybody knows and understands kind of where we are. There's lots of different information streams out there right now. So for those that want to know what's happening in BVSD, you can always go to our website, and that should have the latest information. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity, tunnety, to turn over this part of the presentation to the team, and I'm going to start with introducing Stephanie Farren, who's going to talk a little bit about the differences between stay-at-home and safer-at-home, and how this is impacting us in Boulder Valley. Stephanie.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Board members. I hope you're all well and safe at home tonight. Like Dr. Anderson mentioned, this has been a very active week, both here in Colorado, at the statewide, at the state level, and locally. To begin, I'd like to provide a little bit of perspective on where we are with numbers around the nation and here in Colorado. Unfortunately, we have passed 1 million cases here in the United States. Colorado has seen about 14,000 cases. We have over 530 cases in Boulder and 140 in Broomfield. That being said, yesterday, Governor Polis implemented the Safer At Home Public Health Order, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment, but I want to remind everyone that here in Boulder and Broomfield counties, we do continue to stay in the safe, or the stay-at-home until May 8th. And that order, you know, provides, that order has encouraged us to, we need to stay home and, and wear masks when we're out and things like that. The Boulder and Broomfield continuation is time limited. It does provide Boulder County Public Health with time to develop some effective guidance that will be available to a wide range of businesses and community members and key stakeholders. So that Safer At Home, which we hope Boulder County will be able to move into after May 8th, will be in place for probably about 30 days, although local governments can apply to relax the order or can extend it. It maintains social distancing of six feet, including hand and respiratory hygiene and enhanced cleaning. Those are all still mandatory for everyone. The only real change is that now people are encouraged, not mandated, to stay at home. Recreational travel is restricted to no more than 10 miles from home, but it does allow the general public to gather in groups of 10 or less as long as social distancing is maintained. It also, Safer At Home requires vulnerable populations to stay at home, and it will allow some non-critical businesses to begin operating with restrictions. One of those will be after May the 4th, statewide, Boulder and Broomfield not included, offices will be able to reopen at approximately 50% with best practices, which include masks and face covers, health screenings, enhanced cleaning protocols, and then finally, social distancing at 60 to 65%. Those practices will all need to stay in place to continue to ensure that the curve that we've been able to flatten stays flattened and we don't overwhelm hospital capacity. Really, until we have a vaccine, social distancing and face covers will play a major role in controlling the spread of COVID-19. So we really need to be prepared for state and local public health orders to be extended or amended or changed, really depending on our local situation, which means that we may move between different levels of restrictions during the pandemic. As I mentioned at the last board meeting, CDE and CDPHG are working on considerations and guidances for reopening schools. CDC is working at the national level on that as well. They don't expect that to be ready for a little bit of time. However, we've been working internally on guidances and pulling information from across the country and actually across the world to see what other places have done as far as bringing students back into schools. So we're gathering guidance, and we've been exploring different scenarios, and I think we have a great team together to do that work. Is there any questions or anything that I could answer for any of you?
Board members, any questions? Okay. All right, Rob, who's next up?
Thanks, Stephanie. Next up, we have several, actually, we have all of our area superintendents giving different academic updates in regards to grading, graduation, and how we are tracking those students that have not been engaged and how we're re-engaging those students. It's been a, we've been able to pull some really great data around that, and so we'll share that. But I'd start with Sam SCA, who's going to talk about grading, consistency in grading and home learning. Sam.
Thanks, Dr. Anderson. So during this period, we're continuing to really try to strike this delicate balance between consistency and flexibility in the guidance that we provide to schools from Central Office. As an entire system, our administrators, teachers, students, and families have been asked to do something they never thought they would have to do before, and in a very short timeframe. Everyone in the system has worked incredibly hard to deliver home learning in a way that, that both meets the wide range of individual needs of students, but also creates a consistent and equitable learning experience as much as possible under difficult conditions. One of the first areas in which schools asked Central Office for guidance was on grades. This guidance, which is posted on our district home learning website, was driven by a few key principles. First, that our grading system should never penalize a student who is experiencing barriers to access. We don't want to hold students accountable for factors that are beyond their control. Second, that feedback to students is a higher priority during this time than grades. And third, that different levels need different guidance based on the role that grades play at each level. To that end, we gave the following guidance, that elementary schools should not issue report cards for the rest of the year, but focus on feedback. At middle level, teachers should go to a pass, no grade, for final grades on the report card, but allow teachers to assign grades on individual assignments if they choose. With high schools, we gave the guidance that they should stick with their current grading system, but with an agreement that if a student is actively engaging, their grade could not go down from where it was prior to the onset of home learning. The reason for sticking with letter grades was that we, we didn't want to deny students who had worked very hard to earn a high grade, the opportunity to have that grade show on their transcript. At both middle and high, we provided guidance that a failing-
We just lost Sam.
...for specific students as needed. As, as always with grading, if a parent has a concern, we'd ask that they begin the conversation with a teacher, and if needed, take the issue to the building principal if it can't be resolved at the teacher level. And if an issue still can't be resolved after talking to the principal, then we encourage parents to reach out to their area superintendent.
Sam, we lost a little bit of what you were presenting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Talking about, maybe just start, start from the top around high school. We heard elementary and middle.
Okay, great. So high school, yep, I can go back to that part. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. High schools should stick with their current grading system, but with an agreement that if a student is actively engaging, their grade can't go down from where it was prior to the onset of home learning. And I also wanted to get a little bit of rationale for why we, we stuck with current grading systems at high school. The reason for that was that we didn't want to deny students who'd worked very hard to earn a high grade, the opportunity to have that grade show on their transcript. At both middle and high, however, we provided guidance that a failing grade would have to be approved by a building administrator before it could be issued. And we also advised our building principals to be flexible and use their best judgment to adjust on a case-by-case basis for specific students as needed. As always, if parents have concerns about grading, we ask that they start with the teacher. If it can't be resolved there, then of course, they can go to the building principal. And if it can't be resolved at the principal level, then we encourage parents to reach out to their area superintendent.
Okay. Questions? Richard.
Thanks for the presentation, Sam. A question that I have, just a quick question, is what metrics are you using to measure actively engaged at the high school level? I mean, how do you determine?
That's a great question, Richard. And actually, Robin Fernandez is going to give a more extensive presentation about student engagement in just a bit. But, but really, we set the bar at, you know, if we have evidence that a student is actively engaging, that they're trying to complete assignments, that they're in contact with their teacher, we consider that engagement. If they're simply, and, and we also follow up with them to ensure that they don't have barriers that are preventing them from being engaged. And Robin will present some, some really great information that we have, very detailed information, about how many students are engaged and what barriers exist to those who are not.
Thank you, Sam.
Anything else? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So we can move on to the next presentation.
That's Tina. Next, we'll have Robin Fernandez, Area Superintendent for the East Support Network, talk about student engagement and some of the trends and patterns in the data that we're seeing. And I know that this came up as a, as a question from, from board members at our last meeting. You know, how are we, how are we making sure that, that, that we're not only paying attention to who's engaging, but who's not engaging? And how are we providing those additional supports? So, Robin, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening. As you know, during home learning, we've worked hard to engage all students across the district and to remove any or all barriers that are preventing them from learning. So to that end, we've been closely monitoring our engagement efforts. The data that I'm going to share represents our contacts with students for the purpose of engagement during the time period from April 8th through yesterday, April 27th. Schools and/or members of the engagement team have made contact with 2016 students. So over the first month of home learning, we wanted to contact these students primarily to make sure that they were safe, to know that they had necessary supports, and that they were able to access home learning. It's also important for me to point out that many of these contacts were proactive and supportive in nature. And so they represent the fact that a BVSD staff member reached out solely for that purpose. They don't necessarily signify that this number of students was not engaged or had barriers to engagement. Many of these students that have been contacted receive specific supports through special, special education, meal assistance, CLDE, attendance, et cetera. So many of these contacts, well, 42% to be specific, were made to ensure that the students that need us the most were getting the most proactive support and communication from staff. Of our students and families that did report barriers to learning, fewer than 20% reported illness or tech issues. Tech issues being anything from access, need for device support, et cetera, as hampering their ability to engage in home learning. The vast majority of students that did report barriers to learning had reasons that you see on this slide. These included things like, as you see, family stress, confusion over expectations, and a need for additional support and communication, among others. In addition to tracking individual barriers to engagement, we've also been, of course, approaching home learning through our lens of our priority on equity. Now you see our disaggregated engagement data by number of student contacts. You see that we are tracking this data by ethnicity, meal assistance, special education, and CLDE. Again, these slides show the number of contacts made since April 8th by disaggregated group. As I said before, we do want to make sure that the students that need us most are getting the most engagement support from BVSD staff. Staff are working really hard to get every student what they need during the pandemic. And now we have continued to narrow our definition of engagement, and especially at the high school level, engagement at this point is referred to as work completion. So teachers, leaders, and members of the engagement team are offering a great deal of individualized and specific support to help students and families, enabling them to really access content, complete assignments, speak individually with teachers or other support personnel like special education teachers or interventionists when necessary. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Donna? You're muted.
I know, I was unmuting it, takes me a minute. Who's contacting and who's collecting the data? Is it individual teachers contacting? Is it administrative staff contacting? And who collects the data?
Yes, that is a great question. So we are collecting the data at the school level, and then it comes to us once a week so that we are able to track the trends across the district. So the engagement flow chart starts with contacting the student at their closest point of contact, being the teacher, the principal, the school counselor, the community liaison, school-based personnel. And if, especially during that very first week of home learning, if school personnel were unable to contact a student or a family, they then engage the support of the engagement team, which includes the network, attendance advocates, social, emotional, support staff, community liaisons, et cetera. And then if contact still was not able to be made, then they will loop in the executive director and the area superintendent just to make sure primarily that the student and family are safe, and then that they have access to learning.
Any other questions, Board members? Richard?
Robin, thanks a lot for the presentation. Can you say a little bit more about family-student stress? How did you come to that category? And what, what kind of stories were you hearing?
Sure, well, we have heard quite a bit of anecdotal evidence around stress in the home due to job loss, due to increased financial pressures, due to increased number of people in a physical space, all at one time, not coming and going for school or for work. Issues related specifically to the pandemic, but have to do with the additional stresses that families are under at this time.
Is that it, Richard?
Yeah, that, that really falls in line with what we're hearing from many of the El Paso families in terms of experiencing that stress. One of the stresses that we're hearing from families is their lack of being able to operate the devices or understanding the devices. And in the, at the elementary level, their children don't know how to do it either. So that's, that's another big issue that we're hearing on the ground here.
Yes, that has been a major area of focus for our community liaisons, in addition to teachers and building leaders, since we fortunately have a lot of bilingual staff that is able to work for an extended period of time during a day or consecutive days with parents or students to help them understand how to navigate the Chromebooks.
Lisa, you had your hand, then Donna?
Thank you. I'm curious, for the 80% of folks who are struggling to engage and it wasn't tech or illness-related, what kinds of supports were we able to provide? And what did that follow-up look like?
So that, that's a great question. Sometimes those supports can be provided at the building level. It can be the community liaison, or the teacher, or the, the principal working with the family to understand how to, how to join a class or engage in an assignment online. It can be putting them into contact with the school counselor if there is a family that is struggling, and they are able to connect them to community supports. It really is a very individualized process. The same as occurs when we have in-person instruction and we know that individual students and families struggle. We work to find what the individual support is. Some of it is just helping, frankly, both students and parents talking through the organizational needs of perhaps multiple students and multiple devices and different assignments and different class requirements for different students at different levels and in different schools. Just problem-solving, acting as thought partners. And what we have heard over and over is, we are so thankful that there's someone there. We're so happy that we know we can call someone. Even if you can't change it, you can help us think about how to best function within our current reality.
Donna?
My question is, do the Chromebooks have the screen feature, a screen sharing feature? Because I do think that a lot of times, if you can screen share on a computer, you can walk parents and students, especially at the elementary level where Richard was talking about, at any level. Because I have high school teacher friends that have said some of the issues are resulting in not enough knowledge of the computer itself. So screen sharing would be a good feature, and I'm wondering if it's available.
Yeah, so this is Andrew. And the answer is yes through GoGuardian. GoGuardian has the capability for the teacher to be able to see. We've been very limited, though, in that we don't want video on in students' homes. And so I think we'd have to look at the policies around that if we want to turn it on en masse.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, I think we can move on to our next section.
Thank you.
And I'll just end with making just a few comments. You know, as we, as we look at the data, and board members will continue to look at the data and track that and share that with you. It's not surprising that our most vulnerable families are being impacted by this issue. When you look at more than half of our parent students that we're having to engage come from poverty, free and reduced lunch, and that's really only makes up 20% of our population. We're disproportionately, I'm having to support our Latino families because of, of, of the struggles that are happening. We want to make sure that, that we're focused, we're working together, that we're continuing to focus on equity, which is at the core of our strategic plan. But I'd also like to ask our community to help us. And so if you know of somebody who's struggling, that, let us know. We have a family hotline that we've set up that anybody who's struggling or knows who's somebody who is struggling can contact us, and we can connect them with the supports that they need. That family helpline is 720-770-0102. Again, that's 720-770-0102. And we'd ask that anybody who, who knows of somebody who's struggling, who needs some help, needs, needs a call, whether it's social, emotional support, they're struggling financially, any ways that we can help and support, please utilize that hotline so we can make sure we're supporting our students. And finally, I will now turn the floor over to Margaret Crespo, Area Superintendent for the Southwest Support Network, who will talk about some of the things that we're doing for our senior class.
Great, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Board. As you see, there is a slide of our website, which includes the information related to graduation 2020. Super excited to share, you know, graduation is an incredibly important day for our seniors, and we want to make sure that we are celebrating. The dates have been assigned for the week of July 22nd, 2020. And you can see those posted right now on the website slide. And any updated information as we move forward will be posted in this space. So between May 1st and May 15th, high school principals are hosting senior family chats to discuss and identify priorities for students and families around graduation, obviously depending on the format, based on where we are in terms of safety. Additionally, each principal is developing up to three alternatives for graduation with the hope of being able to do an in-person, host a graduation face-to-face. We're working on those ceremonies if it becomes possible. The other ones, the other opportunities and options will have diminishing in-person, in-person presence. BVSD leadership is in communication with Boulder Public Health regarding updates, protocols, and proposals for our plans. An outreach to CDE leadership will begin shortly after the senior chats and prioritization are completed. I would also add that I'm going to hand it over really quickly to Randy Barber, who's been doing an incredible job with Michelle DeBerry, providing these updates and aligning our principals working together. And I want to thank the high school principals as well. This, obviously, coming up with one plan is difficult, but coming up with three options certainly is a heavy lift, and really grateful for all of their work. Randy?
Thank you, Margaret. I think that one of the things that I'd like, like to mention too is that we just sent out a message to seniors this last Friday, and Superintendent Anderson did a wonderful job of talking to them via video, and you've got to see the, the back of his head at the end of the video. It's, it's marvelous. But in addition to that, we are working, if we can get the next slide, on a series of ways that we can help us celebrate our seniors. We're looking at, and it would be a little bit customized to each school, so we're working with the principals directly, but how at that school during what we're calling Senior Week, which we're envisioning to be the, the week of May 18th, when a lot of these graduations would be going on. Plus, we're hearing from the state that they might be looking at doing something on, on May 20th as well. So this all kind of collates around the same timing, but we would really kind of do something at the schools with big banners on the schools and ability for us to highlight each and every one of the seniors. Also put things on Facebook where people can actually upload their photos that they're supporting a senior or their, their favorite senior. We really want to make a big push to celebrate them. We'll be looking to, to do advertising in the, in the papers and, and social media and all the ways that we can to make sure that these seniors know that we care and that, you know, our community really knows that they, they've made a huge contribution before they move on to college, as well as working with the board to, to potentially put some, you know, material in an op-ed as well that week as well. So a lot of things that we're working on. Again, it may look different from school to school, but hopefully a big, big splash for our seniors.
Okay, any questions, Board members? From Margaret and Randy? Stacy?
My question's about yearbooks. This is probably a school-based question, but wondering if the yearbooks are going to be available for seniors in particular, but everyone more generally who's paid for them, and how those would get distributed?
So I can answer that question. At this point, we are working on a pickup and drop-off plan. And depending on where we are in the delivery of the yearbooks, dependent on each school, will be if we're able to hand those out at that time. We certainly know that yearbooks are second to the most important event for a senior and want to make sure that they have access to them. And again, it will depend on how much contact we can have and what that looks like for delivery and pickup of items. So we'll keep you posted.
Other questions? Kathy?
I just want to do a shout-out to Rob and Randy and the communications staff. If you haven't seen the video that Rob did on Friday, it was awesome. I have two very harsh critics in my household and they gave them both two thumbs up. So thank you for doing that. I thought the right touch of humor and seriousness and I really appreciated you doing that. So, thank you. Last I saw Rob, it had like 8, 8,700 hits or something on Facebook. I mean, so way to go. So thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, then let's move on to, I think, Rob. Price?
Yes, next to talk a little bit about operations and bond update is Rob Price. Rob?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I want to start by highlighting the great work of our food services team. This past week, we distributed over 36,000 meals, which was by far our biggest week yet. That brings our total meal count over 131,000 meals since March 17th. So, thank you for your support and thanks to everyone that has volunteered or donated to the program. We have committed as a district to continuing that program through July 16th. So we'll continue to serve meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays through that date. Real quickly, on a bond update, so seven of the 11 schools that will be under construction this summer have started. So we've been able to get a four-week jump on those seven projects. The rest of the projects will start later this month. So as of right now, we are in schedule and making good progress. But the reason I want to talk about this tonight was is just bring it to your attention that we're still got significant concerns with the supply chain as it relates to the coronavirus, et cetera. So, just this week, one of our major air conditioning equipment suppliers has informed us that they're going to be experiencing delays of 30 days or more. So as you know, we're putting air conditioning in a number of schools. So that causes significant concern for us. Other suppliers, such as lighting distributors, distributors, door hardware providers, and furniture suppliers have all informed us of delays. So, we're continuing to monitor this. We'll continue to update you as we know more. I will assure you, our team is on top of it. We're not going to remove major equipment before we know for sure that we're going to have equipment on hand. So, feel real comfortable with where we're at right now and with what we know. We'll continue to monitor and provide feedback. Any questions on our operations side?
Stacy?
Thanks, Rob. I had read on Facebook that hundreds of families had contributed via their meal plan transfer. And I was wondering if you knew how much money that was. I'm just curious.
I don't know that, Stacy, but I will get that information for the board. It's a good question and that has turned out to be extremely positive. So thank you.
Kitty?
Yes, I was wondering if there is a way that just the general public can contribute to the food program? Because I know they have the thing where they were paying, people were contributing to pay for families who owe money. So how can the public contribute to help the food program?
So if they visit Impact on Education's website, there is a link there to contribute to the Food Emergency Program.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's move on.
Thanks, Tina. And for our final cabinet member presenting, we'll have Bill Sutter give everybody an update on where we are today with budget. So, Bill?
Good evening. The activities at the state level really are all the update is at this point. The Joint Budget Committee met yesterday to review some of the budget balancing options that were provided by the Legislative Council staff. Of course, the one most interesting to us was the Department of Education and the reductions that were proposed for that. Mostly grants and cash payments that have been in the state budget for a while. Some of those grants we utilize and some we do not. No current awards are proposed to be taken away. So it's not cutting a program that was awarded last year for a three-year grant or something like that. So, there are a number of them. Some of them are smaller, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and some of them are up in the millions. They did reverse some decisions that were made earlier in this legislative session, so undoing some of the things that they had already funded. The budget stabilization factor, which will be the the biggest factor for K-12 school districts moving forward. Though current law states that the budget stabilization factor cannot increase, so the legislature needs to act in order to increase that. It absolutely will increase. The real question is just to what extent. And again, that has to be an action of the legislature. It can't automatically adjust by some other means. It was identified that the CARES Act funds are not available to backfill state budgets. I think that was the kind of plan at one point in time, a few weeks ago. But the rules around that came out that basically said it could not. So there are certainly conversations and perhaps even couched as hopes or dreams of another round of federal funding for state and local governments. This is not just Colorado. This is all across the country. Drop in revenue collections, income tax, all that. So that will take much longer than the state has to act on its budget. There were some discussions and proposals for making changes to PARA, which is problematic in the sense of the outlook on PARA and the requirement that it be funded under current statute within, I believe it's 40 years to be fully funded. It was on track. So what they've proposed is to eliminate the direct transfer from the state to PARA. It's 225 million for the 2020, 21 fiscal year. There's also some discussions on changing the automatic adjustment for employers and employees on the rate increase. So there's a rate increase that because of the downturn in December of 2018, it takes quite a while for the automatic adjustment to kick in. But it was December of 2018 that there was a dip, and so that kind of affected PARA's returns for that year. And so there was an automatic adjustment for employees and employers that was supposed to kick in July 1 of this current year. So they're talking about not doing that, which certainly the intent is to lessen the impact on districts, not having to fund that when there aren't revenues coming in, as well as employees that are beginning to realize the expectations of salary increases are pretty unlikely. And so to not have salary increases and have a rate increase on PARA is kind of a double whammy. So they're being sensitive to that, legislature. For next steps, the Joint Budget Committee will meet over the next two weeks. And their plan is to close out the budget by May 11th, the week of May 11th. They'll have an updated revenue forecast on May 12th. The March 16th forecast really didn't have the full realized impact of the pandemic in the data that they were using. Certainly, it was starting to come to light at that point in time. But just how quickly and how massive the unemployment became really wasn't pulled into that. So this updated forecast, in between March and June, when they normally happen, is certainly going to be the big driver of the state's budget. And then they're going to introduce the long bill on May 18th. And the last I heard was hopefully to have it to the governor by May 30th for signature. So that's kind of the timeline going forward on this.
That it?
That's it.
All right. Well, what questions do we have? Kathy?
Thanks, Bill, for the update. I think when people read the Joint Budget Committee briefing, people got really excited until they realized that it was budgeting to current law and the March forecast. Because it didn't show increasing the negative factor any. So at the School Finance Project meeting on Friday, there was a question about asking the legislature to use last year's October Count Day, which I haven't thought through very well, but it seems like if you could have some certainty of around at least one piece of the formula, it would be helpful.
So, actually, started playing around with some numbers on that very question. It depends on how it's rolled out. If, so the overall projection from January, which is the best data that we have at this point in time, or the governor's budget that was put together with all the school districts and the changes in enrollment, it was almost flat enrollment for the entire state. I think it was about 400 students out of the 900,000 students in the state was the projected growth. And what that is, is declines of about 6,600 students in districts and growth of about 7,000 students in districts. So, if we'll just assume the way that there was any difference and that it was net zero across the entire state, growth of 7,000 and decline of 7,000, that means that the districts that would otherwise have growth wouldn't get funded for that if they were funded at last year. So if a mechanism has to be built in to address that and say, if you grow, then you get funding for that, or if you don't, you decline, then you get the funding at the prior year. That money would need to come from somewhere. And about 7,000 kids is roughly $55-odd million. And so, that means potentially you would have to take $55 million away from all the students in order to fund the growth and the not decline. And so, there isn't a great way to figure it out because of the complexities of the School Finance Act and you can't just go in and sort of play with the numbers. But it makes me wonder if it's kind of a zero-sum game that if you take a little bit away from all the students in order to fund a handful of students and it's net zero across the state, that means it comes out so that you don't really gain any. Seems weird, but that's my sort of back-of-the-napkin thinking on it.
I know that it's hard to predict, but my fear is that, well, as bad as this next budget year is going to look, it could look even worse the year after. Do you have any thoughts on that? I think it impacts our thinking of how often we can use one-time monies and what that looks like. Or do you think, I mean, I know you can't predict the future, but what's your best guess right now?
It really all matters on just how quickly the recovery happens. The March 16th forecast, all the discussions there, as well as one that I saw from Rich Wobken that's you. The Colorado economy and even the national economy was in very good shape, pretty good shape at the point of, you know, early March or February. And so, if the decline is, it was obviously very steep. If it's a steep return out of it, then that's kind of an indication that it's shorter term in nature, not longer term in nature. We really won't know this until until things either do or don't start turning around, what happens at the state level with getting the economy going again. Obviously, the first rounds of job losses were at the lower-income brackets, right? They were service workers, hotels, restaurants, bars, things like that, all our ski slopes. So, you know, those are lower-wage jobs. The real concern or question even is, does that translate into more higher-wage jobs? Which is what tended to happen in the Great Recession, right? That was in the financial industries and so those were kind of higher-wage jobs that went away at that point in time. So, again, the depth and length of this recession decline and how quickly we come out of it is really, and we won't know that for several more months.
So two more quick questions. So there's been talk about the possibility of declaring a health emergency as some way to get around Tabor and to temporarily raise taxes and then put it on the ballot in November. Maybe premature to talk about that, but have you heard any of those conversations?
I saw, I think it was a tweet from the Colorado Fiscal Institute, maybe suggesting that as an option. I'll leave the constitutional lawyers to battle that out as to whether it's okay or not. But we'll leave it there.
Yeah, Tabor, I mean, allows it, but the question in my mind is what you have to do to use up your reserves before you have to have access to doing that. So maybe we can just follow it and talk about it at the next board meeting. And then does anything that you've given us in this whole list of deadlines and everything, how is that going to impact us in our budget-making?
It really doesn't, in my mind, from the path that we're on. The levers that we have to pull to react to cuts in funding this late in the game, they are somewhat limited, but they're not non-existent. So, you know, we're certainly having those kind of internal discussions about, you know, what needs to happen at what level of impact that we end up seeing. So the path that we're on, and, you know, overall, we are talking about a relatively small fraction of the overall budget. It won't be easy. It won't be fun and it won't be painless to make any reduction of any sort. But there are levers that can be pulled to buy us some time. So that does include, you know, the use of fund balance, one-time resources to give us a year to manage through things like changing staffing allocations. It would be challenging to do it this late in the game, go through and redo all the allocations that have gone out to schools. So, you know, to the extent that we have those resources available, we can use it for a year to be thoughtful going through the process of changing staffing allocations.
How much money do we have left if we were to go for a transportation mill levy override? How much could we raise?
I want to say it's in the neighborhood of six or seven million. Relatively small amount.
Yeah, ballpark.
Okay. Donna?
I was just going to comment to Kathy's questions on, or suggestions or comments. I think it'd be a hard sell on the ballot, whether mill levy or increased taxes in such an economic crisis. That's just a comment I wanted to make. That's just a comment I wanted to make.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Bill? All right, hearing none. Rob?
Just want to thank the team for, again, for just doing such an amazing job. We have such competent, highly skilled members on our team that are really helping guide us through this, this turbulent time for sure. The one thing, the one other topic that I want to just briefly touch on is, is something that I'm sure, I know board members are getting emails about, that I'm certainly getting emails about. And everybody's wanting to know, what does next year look like? What is August going to look like? I want, I want the community to know that we're being very thoughtful. And we're thinking about this in, in terms of a spectrum of options from where we are today, which is all online, to where we will eventually be, which is back all in person for the most part. So we're working with the experts, our teams are collecting more information. Once we have, we have that kind of dialed in from an academic standpoint, we'll be engaging both the operations team, our local health officials to begin to understand what it might look like if you were to go back in a blended learning environment. Now, how would we pull that off? What would be the things that we would have to do differently? We, members of our team are in conversations, not just locally, but from, you know, with cabinet members and superintendents from across the country, trying to put our heads together what this could look like and hoping to use the best of what we hear there as we develop our plan. So I know that we haven't announced anything and I know the community is wondering, what are we doing? I've even heard rumblings of some parents, you know, saying that they may even go to homeschooling next year because they're, they just want some assurances of what things are going to happen. And I would just ask parents to be patient with us, patience with us as we move forward with this plan. And I assure you that over the course of the next several weeks, we'll have a well-articulated, well-thought-out plan that we can, we can share out. But until then, hang tight. And for those of you that are emailing your thoughts and ideas, I do appreciate those and I do share those with our team. So if there's members in the community, you have ideas you want to share, I share and forward those on as our team is thinking through these. And so that's all I have for superintendent's update.
All right. And board members, another round of questions or thoughts that you want to share with Rob? Kathy?
I just have a question because you kind of answered it. I know we don't have a firm date, but what, is there a drop, is there like a deadline that you would need to decide whether we're going in-person hybrid, what we're doing in the fall? Would it be this summer sometime? I mean, do you have a date you're looking at to make the decision by, like ballpark?
No, we haven't, we haven't set a date. You know, it being the end of April, you know, we've got a few months. I would imagine in July at some point, right, we would have to make that announcement. But that, we haven't set a deadline for when we're going to make the decision or not. Just so much information is ever-changing. I was talking to Rob Price today, who's been in contact with, with several of, you know, just local municipalities, universities. And, you know, a lot of them have given up on just long-term projections. They just are, are working two-week plans because the information is changing so much. And so we're doing the best that we can, but I don't have a date yet, but I would imagine it would be in July.
And I didn't think of a date. I was just thinking of ballpark where we could be thinking that we, because at some point, we're going to have to decide. So thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. So then we'll move on to our next item, which is public participation. So this week, this meeting, again, we use this alternate form of public participation, which is that we ask members of our community, parents and staff, to send their feedback by email with the words "public comment" in the subject line. Those emails were posted to the board docs. In May 12th, we are going to try a limited live public comment. We're learning from other people how to do this best. And hopefully that'll feel a little bit more like our usual communication with our community. So having, assuming everyone has read that, we can then move on to board communication. Any, who would like to begin? Anybody? Kitty?
It does take a second to unmute, doesn't it? I just want to once again say to all of the staff, what a good job you're doing and how impressed I am with everything and with how difficult this all is, and especially for the teachers. And a couple of things about honoring seniors. I saw the picture from the Broomfield Enterprise of what Broomfield High did with all of those signs. And I put them on my Facebook page. And then I found an article in the New York Times today that is teaching parents how to be their kid's teacher. And I also posted that. And I thought that would be helpful for anybody who's working with their kids at home. And another thing is that my, I have an next-door neighbor who is an eighth grader. And if anyone's concerned that the work is not hard enough when we're online learning, he said his work is harder than it was before. So that's all I have.
Okay. Other board members like to say anything? Donna?
Just real quick, I do want to acknowledge teachers are working hard. I speak with a neighbor that's a kindergarten teacher, a friend that I speak with regularly that's high school teacher. But I also have lots of parents that walk by and we talk with our masks on. And some, it seems like there's some inconsistency and maybe Rob can address this. I did send him one of the emails that a parent shared with me to ask that their, their student was only getting about an hour's worth of, of work a week in, in their math class at high school. So I want to share that there's another side too, that is there consistency across the board on how to engage and keep students progressing like they should be.
Okay, Rob?
Thanks, Donna. And I would share with the board, if you look at our plans within the strategic plan, you know, with strategic initiatives, 1A, 1B, and even 6A, we're really working towards as a system to creating more consistency, right? And so this isn't a new issue. I would say that the teachers are working hard. And again, if a parent feels like that their child isn't being challenged or that they, that they're not, they need more work, they're not getting enough work, the best route is to follow our chain of command, contact your teacher, contact the principal. I think we'd have a lot more success over the course of these next two months on trying to help individuals with their individual situations as opposed to what we've already established as, as an issue that we want to work towards, but just going to take some time of teachers working together to make sure that we're prioritizing standards, creating a great, strong instructional model for all teachers, making sure that we're providing culturally relevant instruction and having a level of standardization and consistency with the flexibility for teachers always to make it their own and to go above and beyond. So again, this is, I would say this, this situation has, has maybe did a good job of shining a light on that issue that we previously identified. But again, individual parents, contact your teacher, contact your principal, contact area superintendent if those don't work. And we're going to do everything we can to support you.
Thanks, Rob. I think that people just needed to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
Thank you. I met with the NAACP Education Committee this week and I sent Rob an email afterwards with a couple of follow-ups. One thing I was hoping to highlight today was a question I asked around families that have transportation issues or fears around ICE when it comes to school food pickup and how several schools are doing drop-offs at the homes for those families. But whether that's every school, is there a district-wide initiative around that? Or is each school sorting it out? And are we doing any tracking of which schools are doing it and what that data looks like? Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Lisa. Yeah, so that, those efforts are being coordinated by Ari and our family engagement team. It is district-wide.
We just lost Rob a little.
Yeah, he's showing that he's not muted, so I think we have another technical difficulty. Rob, if you can hear me, mute and unmute, please.
Is that better?
Yes.
Oh. Nobody can hear me?
No.
Okay, all right, from the top. Yes, Lisa, thank you. Appreciate it. And appreciate everybody hanging in there with our technical difficulties. These are district-wide efforts, right? So Ari Gerson Kessler is, is leading those efforts with our family engagement team. And so if there are our parents, families who need us to make deliveries to people's homes, we are actually doing that. Again, I would, I would steer folks to the family helpline, 720-770-0102. Make that call regardless of what your challenge issue is, we will make sure that we get you the support. So I appreciate that feedback. Appreciate always our partnership with NAACP and for bringing ACT to life for us. But we, we are able to, to work through that and, and help families.
Lisa, another?
Just a follow-up. So Ari's team is collecting data on the numbers for school of families that are needing that and what our efforts are looking like. And at some point in the future, we could, we could look at that maybe after the summer?
I think Ari's efforts are really just, just making sure that he's, everybody on his team is engaged in helping to the extent that he's collecting data that would be usable afterwards. What type of data would you be looking for or what you were thinking, what are you thinking about?
Probably overall, just the numbers of folks for schools who are needing that service and whether that seems to match up with the numbers of folks, whether the number of folks who are receiving that service is the same as the number of folks who we know might be needing that and whether we can look to see whether this effort was coordinated as well as it needed to be in case a situation arises again.
Sure. Yeah, I can, I can talk.
We've lost your voice again, Rob.
Okay, well, let's go to a question from Stacy. And hopefully Rob can mute and unmute again.
Okay. I just want to also thank everyone for doing such a great job. I can't even imagine what it must be like to teach your students, teach your kids, worry about everyone in the same house at the same time. So I really do appreciate our staff and teachers as well. One thing I just want to mention is we've talked about taking care of our seniors and I'm so glad that we're going to do that because it's a milestone that should happen. But I also want to make sure that going forward, we're paying attention to our current juniors. This is a really stressful time for them. They should be looking at colleges right now, being recruited if they play a sport, taking tests, entrance exams. And I know that a lot of colleges have decided they're optional, but it doesn't take the stress away from what these juniors and to a lesser extent sophomores are experiencing. And I just want to make sure that that's part of the plan going forward for next year. These juniors who are going to be seniors next year are going to have a whole host of issues that no one has ever thought of before. And I just want to make sure that we're taking care of them in the plan for next year.
Okay. Richard, did you have anything to say?
Yep. Thanks, Rob and staff for all the hard work that you're doing and keeping us informed in terms of what to expect in the future. I have a comment and then a question. I know that you worked very, very hard on the strategic plan. And there are some elements in the strategic plan that may not need to be looked at again, but because they're so academic oriented. But I'm wondering in terms of the family engagement piece of the strategic plan, because what we're learning through this pandemic, if you're going to go back and look at that again and see what we can do to, to assure that our families do get the support. I'm talking about our, our English language learner, our second language families. I'm talking about our free and reduced lunch families. I'm talking about our Latino families, sped families. If, if in fact, we're going to go back and relook that piece of the strategic plan to see what, what, what we can do to make it better as it relates to this, this crisis that we're, we're in and the lessons that we're learning. And if we're going to include more, more family engagement or family training in the, in the strategic plan, I'm concerned that, that we're not out of the woods yet. And I'm thinking that if we do have to come back because of this early safe-at-home thing that we're doing, that our families that I just mentioned are still going to be left behind. And I want to make sure that that does not happen.
Okay. Rob?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I apologize. I'm not sure what happened because it wasn't showing that I was on mute. Richard, appreciate your comments. I would say that when you look at our strategic plan, which as a reminder to the board and the community, was, was based on the feedback of over 2,000 of our citizens and employees, a huge focus was on closing, was on equity and closing opportunity gaps and achievement gaps. And so I would say that the core of the strategic plan certainly is right on track to where I believe this community's priorities are and this board's priorities are. Now, as we think about family engagement, which while maybe not one of the strategic initiatives or, or, you know, or maybe the strategic initiatives aren't to the extent that, that, that you, you may be looking for. And we could certainly change that. I would say that the, that we would be, need to be careful about starting to switch a five-year strategic plan a year in because we really haven't even begun to see the, the benefits of that yet because the work is still continuing. But as always, you know, Richard, and this is a priority for me as well, want to make sure our families are engaged. I think Lisa brought up some great points earlier in her questions in regards to the families that we are, that we're helping. To what extent are those the families that we would assume would need the help? And are there families that need help that for some reason are getting, are falling through the cracks? And we, for, you know, through our current avenues, resources, supports, aren't noticing that or are, are missing that? I would say that, that, you know, we've got lots of ways that, that people can help us, let us know if there are families that need help that aren't getting that help. I would encourage folks to focus energies there to make sure that you're letting us know, utilizing that family helpline. But again, you know, strategic plans, you know, as we start to see them, see this moving forward, I think that that will be something that we just have to, to watch to ensure that we're on the tracks. We're, we're on track to, to meet those goals of what we're trying to accomplish. So in any event, appreciate your comments.
Okay. And Kathy, did you go already? You have nothing?
Okay. I already had some questions and stuff, so thanks, Tina. I'm good.
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate what you said, Rob, but we never had the pandemic when we were putting the strategic plan together. So I'm hoping that we do go back and look at some of the elements of it.
Donna?
I, I had someone from one of the schools in our district talk about how they really, really worked hard to, and I, I'm just amazed at the dedication of our staff to track down families that have moved and are in a different area and have food delivered to them and Chromebooks delivered. And I really think our staff is working hard. I just happened to think of that and someone had let me know through a text that that was going on. I'm happy to hear that.
Okay. So I just want to make a couple of comments also. The first is, Rob, if I'm not mistaken, there was also a social media post about the five steps to get help. And, and I, I thought it was really good. I think it includes the 720 number that you talked about. I am wondering if that was shared with our partnered agencies, our partner agencies. I'm, from what I can tell, we're partnering with so many agencies right now. My guess is it's pretty good lines of communication going across through the community on how to get help within BDSM. Is that pretty much the case?
Yes, I believe so. But we can continue to push that out. I did think it was a very helpful, a very helpful graphic that our team put together.
Okay. And then the, the other thing is, a lot of us have expressed appreciation this evening for the tremendous job that our staff and our teachers are doing. So I just wanted to remind everyone, because we don't meet again until May 12th, that from May 4th until May 8th is the employee, the BDSM employee appreciation week. And the specific teacher appreciation day is May 5th. So, you know, tell your friends, tell the people in your community that it's a great time to reach out and to thank our teachers who in, and you know, mere 14 days switched an entire profession into the online space without ever having any training. Usually you go to school for this and you learn a lot and your families go to training and the kids go to training. And we just knocked it out in 14 days and have 96% engagement. And I think it's pretty phenomenal. And then the last thing I want to share is, is more of a sentiment. I had the I had the incredible fortune of seeing Amanda Gorman, who was the 2018 Youth Nobel Laureate at the Conference of World Affairs about two years ago. And she just, um, showed a video of her, I think it was on CBS News, reciting a poem that she wrote about the pandemic in an entirely empty public library of Los Angeles, which if you don't know, is my hometown. And I just wanted to read the last, um, bit of her poem because if I had to think of the words that express how I feel about the employees and the staff of Boulder Valley School District and this board and our community, I think that she captured it so well. It's very short. "We'll observe how the burdens braved by humankind are also the moments that make us humans kind. Let every dawn find us courageous, but closer, heating the light before the fight is over. When this ends, we'll smile sweetly, finally seeing in testing times, we became the best of beings." So that's my, uh, public comment. Um, so our next item, does anyone need a break? Okay, so our next item, our action items. And our first item, whoops, sorry. Do I have this right? Okay. Our first, I, our next item is information. It's our legislative update. Does anyone have anything to add? Okay, um, I think we're all getting reports from Ernestine and Tanya and I think that you'll be seeing more information coming out of them because of the pace of the budget session. Um, so our action items, it's in consent grouping. I'm going to read the list of items. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, April 14th, 2020 Regular Reading. 7.3 Approval of a Contract to E-Site Energy, Inc. for a web-based vendor-hosted energy information system. 7.4 Award of Contracts for Furnishing Fixtures and Equipment, FFNE, at Education Center Campus. 7.5 ERP System Selection and For Cloud Site. 7.6 Non-Renewal of Contact Tracks. Are there any items board members would like to pull from consent grouping? Okay, hearing none, can we get a motion to approve the items on the consent grouping?
Some.
Okay, by Richard and seconded by Kitty. Uh, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we're going to move to the action items on our agenda. Our first and only action item is, um, 8.1, the authority to retain counsel to investigate litigation regarding vaping. Um, just as a reminder to the public, this is a, a, a class action lawsuit about, against some of the vaping industry's marketing and targeting practices toward youth, uh, which we felt that we were, um, negatively affected by and which we worked very hard in conjunction with the city of Boulder and other, other municipalities to put more restrictions on the use of vaping among, um, our teens. So, uh, first we have a motion to approve by Ca- Kathy, second by Richard. Um, are there any questions or any thoughts? Kitty?
Yes, I'm curious what we mean by investigate or, or whatever it says, um...
Investigate, yes.
Yeah, to, um, the possibility of litigation. What's that going to involve?
Rob or Kathleen?
Kathleen, if you want to address that.
Sure, I can. So the investigation phase will be pretty straightforward. It really will be a process of looking at how Boulder Valley Schools in particular have been impacted by this vaping epidemic. It really is, um, an ethical, uh, uh, need to divide retaining a lawyer for a purpose of considering whether or not you have a case as opposed to retaining them to file for you. So this is the recommendation of the firm that we've identified that we're working with, that we first have that detailed, in-depth conversation. But we expect that's going to be, um, pretty straightforward and that we'll be teed up for determination about joining that litigation. This motion would delegate to Dr. Anderson the ability to make that decision to officially join, pending completion of that. Like I said, interviews and just looking at some documents.
Thank you. So then a follow-up, my dog was barking like a maniac, so I couldn't hear everything you said. But would we, if we decide to go ahead with this, would we use the same counsel?
We would, yes. They come highly recommended, they have a significant amount of experience. And, um, uh, Dr. Anderson and I have both spent time in conversation with them and feel that we'd be in good hands. Thank you.
Um, other questions or comments about this action item? Okay, hearing none, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Tina, I think Rob wanted to comment.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, Tina, I just wanted to, um, you know, for, just for the, for the board and for the public, we just, we, we feel like this is the right next step. We feel that, that we're in a great position to be leaders amongst the state and the nation around this fight against youth vaping. And, uh, we feel like that this is the, the next step that we should be taking and that, that we're in a great position to be, to be leaders on this. As I just wanted to be on the record, uh, you know, in regards to why we're moving forward.
Okay. All right, shall we now do the vote?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then our final item is agenda setting. First, um, I want to just remind us all that we have a prioritization on June 9th. So that's a place where we'll weigh some of the new ideas that are outside of the strategic plan and see which things, if any, we want to pursue, what kind of capacity our, the staff has and what kind of prioritization we can make on the different ideas that have been bubbling up over the last, um, it's actually been a while, four or five months. Um, and then, and our next meeting is going to be on May 12th. Um, so any other items that, uh, people want to add or... Is everyone okay? All right, you can always send in an RFI, which is a great way to get started on an idea. Do a little research. Okay, so with that, I would like to thank you all for joining us, either on YouTube or if you didn't know, after about five minutes, we are back broadcast on Channel 22. So we, um, all those viewers were lucky to see us there as well. So thank you so much and I hope you all stay safe and, uh, enjoy the rest of this good weather. Adjourn.